Five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council meeting for Monday, April 15th, 2013. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing Oh Canada. Thank you to the Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio and to the National Film Board for the images of our country. We'd move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor Crokin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the minutes of the city council meeting held April 1st, 2013 be adopted.
Thanks very much. Councillor Crokin, did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Nothing out of place, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That takes us to the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Rice.
I move adoption of the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Councillor Rice. Any notes on the agenda? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That takes us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is not only for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. Tonight, we had two scheduled delegations, and we'll start off with Mr. Randy Wald regarding the Day of Mourning.
Thank you, Mayor Given and councillors. I'd like you to do your space off. I'm Randy Wald of QP Local 77, the Canadian Union of Public Employees, and with me this evening is a fellow executive member, Gigi La Forge. Tonight, the Canadian Union of Public Employees Local 77 Executive and on behalf of the members of the local are here this evening to bring awareness of April 28th, the National Day of Mourning. The National Day of Mourning, held annually on the April, on 28th of April, was based on a resolution written by QP's National Health and Safety Committee to remember workers killed and injured on the job. QP proposed and adopted the Canary in a Cage as a national recognition symbol, recognized symbol for the Day of Mourning. This came about in the 19th century when miners would take a caged canary into the mines with them because canaries were more sensitive to airborne hazards and if the canary became stressed or overcome with hazards, then it was a sign to evacuate the mine. Also, this day is also designed to focus on awareness and prevention of workplace injuries and also by making workplace safe, workplaces safer for all workers and also by helping to maintain regulations and enforcement of legislation that currently exists. The numbers are staggering. In 2011, 919 workplace deaths were recorded in Canada, a decrease from 1,014 the previous year. This represents more than 2.6 deaths every single day. In the 19-year period from 1993 to 2001, 17,062 workers lost their lives due to work-related causes. That's an average of 898 deaths per year. And Alberta's not alone. In Alberta, 145 workers died as a result of workplace injury or illness in 2012. That's an increase from the previous year of 123 workers. The local hopes that by doing this, that the annual observance of this day will strengthen the resolve to establish safe conditions in the workplace for all. It is much a day to remember the 145 workers that died as it is to present to, I should say, as to protect the living. So from this, the local wants to bring awareness, from this day of recognition, the local wants to bring awareness and significance of this important day by hosting a small ceremony at City Hall on Friday, April 26, 2013, beginning at 11:00 a.m. And with that closing, the local at this time also wants to thank the City of Grand Prairie for their commitment to ensure safety, to ensure safety is a priority for all employees and also thanks the city for their continued support in raising awareness about April 28th for all workers in the area as well as the public. Thank you. That's our presentation. Have I, any questions or?
While council's considering that, thanks very much, Randy. We really appreciate the partnership we have with QP in terms of workplace safety and the efforts that we make in partnership together to ensure that all City of Grand Prairie workers have the utmost safety standards and protection. And we've also appreciated being able to support QP with recognizing April 28th, I think probably for, I think, as long as you guys have asked. Now it's getting to be probably closer, close to nearly 10 years.
That is correct, Mayor Given. It's, I would, 1999 is one way, just since we came forward this. So we do very much, the local do very much appreciates the, the corp, like the corporation that we do together. So, thank you.
I see Councillor Rice has a question or comment.
I want to commend you, Randy, and your team for your efforts in putting this on. My father was killed in a workplace accident when I was 16, and I think making people aware, you talked about the 900 and some, in that split second, your entire life changes forever. So anything we can do to prevent workplace accidents certainly has my support.
Thanks very much.
Thanks very much, Randy. Ms. La Forge?
Thank you. Thanks for coming today.
Thank you.
So I said we had two scheduled delegations. We also have Ms. Joanne Kazakov, who is here for the proclamation of Emergency Medical Services Week. So Joanne, do you want to join us at the table?
I did invite more people, but they're out saving lives.
Well, that's good. We're happy, we're happy that they're out on the streets saving lives. And that means that we're in the right place here in council. So it's a pleasure to make this proclamation on behalf of council to proclaim Emergency Medical Services Week from May 26th to June 1st, 2013, whereas medical services is a, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves their survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of the emergency, the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore I, Mayor Bill Given, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 26th to June 1st, 2013, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Grand Prairie. Joanne, I'm going to come up and we'll present this to you. We can do the official photograph.
Awesome. Thank you very much. So EMS Week is the last week in May, and we invite council, if anyone would like to.
Have a seat, Joanne.
Oh, thanks. If anyone would like to participate in an EMS ride-along with the ambulance, I know that we invited Mr. Given, and he's going to be able to hopefully do a, do a call, but if anyone else from council would like to spend a couple hours on the ambulance doing 911 calls with us, you're more than welcome, and I can give you my contact information. We'll send you a calendar event, so there'll be happening across the community, the celebration of EMS Week.
Thanks very much for the invitation, Ms. Kazakov. I don't know if any council members had any questions about EMS, Emergency Medical Services, or the week, or the celebrations. I see a couple in the queue. Councillor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Did you say you were going to let me drive an ambulance?
Maybe you want to explain, Ms. Joanne, about how a ride-along would work?
So a ride-along is set up where you would ride as a third, as an observer, with the paramedics for a couple hours.
Thank you.
We might put you to work.
I see, I see Councillor McLean. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Joanne, just a quick question for EMS Week celebration. There was talk, Wayne Drysville was in front of us, and I remember the new hospital, they have four bays, and I was trying to get indication of a, a new destination where we could take off and help people in the region, not just the city, but the county. Has there been anything, not trying to put you on the hot seat there, brought up that some of those bays might be utilized for, for that exactly service?
Joanne?
And I, I don't have that sort of, access to that sort of information, but I could certainly ask the right people and be able to report something back to you.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne.
Well, I don't see any other questions. Thank you. Oh, Councillor Rice.
Just want to remind council, some of those who weren't around, that for the original GPROMs with the county and the MD of Greenview in the city, and Sexsmith and Hythe and Wembley, we set up a system that was so enviable that we were the pilot when the province decided to change ambulance service. So we've always had a service we can be proud of, and, you know, thanks to the, the staff, the people who staff it, I think, and the respect we give them.
Exactly right. Thanks, Councillor Rice. Councillor McLean?
And I, we certainly miss GPROMs.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor. Just because I heard in the community and from different individuals about times of getting to the area where you need to get to help the individual, so I'm worried about times. And so anyways, if you get me that information too, Joanne, I'd gladly would like to take it. Thank you.
And I think that's a fair question. Public education's my department, but certainly operational people would be able to address that, and I could certainly connect with those people.
Thanks very much, Ms. Kazakov. Well, thank you for everything you do in the community. We're a pleasure to be able to make this proclamation in advance so that you're ready for the events that you have organized. I'd encourage council members to take the opportunity to book a ride-along if you, if you have a moment or two or a few hours. I did last year, and I actually am a lifesaver, I believe, because last year when I booked it, there were no calls for the entire time that I was there. And the, and the EMS staff said that it was the most incredible thing, but there were no calls. And I can really only attribute it to the fact that I was in the ambulance and therefore nothing happened. So if council can save lives just by attending at the ambulance station and setting up a ride-along, then, then that's great. But thanks very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, you had some information about wait times, though?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given.
If you want to get your microphone.
Thank you, Mayor Given. If you go to Alberta Health Services website, they have the activity, monthly emergency medical services activity summary and the response times. So you can check the response times for, for Grand Prairie, and it goes back quite a, quite a, quite a bit. So that's on, on the website.
That's great. So good find, Mr. City Manager. Maybe you could email that around, link to that around to council members for that information. That's great. Okay. So as I said, this is the public delegation portion of our agenda, an opportunity for anybody to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. I'm not sure if I see anybody else out in the crowd that's looking to come forward, but this is an opportunity at every regular standing city council meeting for anybody in the community to come forward. We'll close the delegation portion of the agenda, and we'll wait for, for next time to see if there's anybody else that comes. And we move into public hearings, and we start with item 6.1, Bylaw C-1237C Municipal Development Plan Amendment Bylaw, and Bylaw C-1100-186 Entrance Feature Signs on Public and Private Lands. I have a feeling that this is Mr. Stuart Wright.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Given, members of city council. My name is Stuart Wright, planner with the City of Grand Prairie. The first request, Bylaw C-1237C, is an amendment to the municipal development plan. This amendment has been initiated by city administration. The amendment is proposed to incorporate citywide policy direction to address future requests for entrance features on public and private lands. Just by way of a brief background, the policy direction proposed is associated with Policy 611, which was approved by council on July the 9th, 2012, which basically addressed issues or concerns about entrance feature signs, whether they were going on public or private lands, and in particular concerns or problems about future maintenance of those signs. So Policy 611 does address proposed signs on public lands, and this is just to incorporate at a general level the provisions of that policy, and also the associated bylaw here tonight, Bylaw C-1100-186, which I'll move on to shortly, is proposing amendments to the land use bylaw with respect to such signs going on private property. Council gave first reading to this bylaw, C-1237, on March 18th, 2013. The bylaw was advertised for two consecutive weeks in the local newspaper in accordance with the requirements of the Municipal Government Act. Additionally, a copy of the bylaw was sent direct to the Grand Prairie Urban Development Institute and Grand Prairie Home Builders Association. Administration also had discussions with the Urban Development Institute about this bylaw, and there was confirmation that there were no objections to it. Furthermore, with respect to the notifications in the local newspaper at the time of preparing the report that council has received, administration had not received any inquiries or objections to this proposed amendment to the municipal development plan. Therefore, the recommendation is that council gives Bylaw C-1237C second and third final readings to amend the municipal development plan.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Wright. We move into the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. I would look for anybody that wanted to come forward to speak in favor or in opposition to the proposed changes. I'd call again to see if there's anybody that would like to come forward to speak in favor or in opposition to these proposed changes. And a third and final time before I close the presentation submission portion of the public hearing, I see nobody coming forward. So before I close the public hearing, I'll have an opportunity for questions of administration for council. I see nobody ringing in. Oh, Councillor Rice?
Not really on, on this issue, but the land use bylaw is coming forth, an amended land use bylaw will be coming forward in the next few weeks. I, I think the staff has had extensive open houses and public input sessions. Is that correct?
That's right.
Mayor Given, yes, Councillor Rice, I believe that there has been extensive consultation sessions undertaken both for new land use bylaw and for this actually, this policy amendment and the land use bylaw amendment that is going to be proposed tonight.
Okay, because I see two of them, and so are we making the stakeholders aware when they come to those public sessions that ongoing amendments are being made?
Mayor Given, Councillor Rice, in respect of the amendments, the focus by administration for these amendments were for the Urban Development Institute as typically, because entrance feature signs would typically be for new subdivisions, primarily for residential purposes, but also it is being proposed for commercial and industrial. So administration had focus for this amendment to go to the Urban Development Institute and the Home Builders Association that typically would be developer-driven rather than individual property owners or individual businesses that would propose an entrance feature sign.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for administration? Seeing, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing and move to business arising. I have a number of motions coming out of this. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council give second reading to Bylaw C-1237C, being an amendment to the municipal development plan.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. So a motion for second reading, any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council give third reading to Bylaw C-1237C, being an amendment to the municipal development plan.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. So a motion for third reading, any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you. I'll move that council give second reading to Bylaw C-1100-186, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. So a motion for second reading of the actual land use bylaw amendment. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none in the queue, I'll just say that council has seen this process actually for probably a better part of a year, actually, and so it's not the first time that council's seen it here tonight. We've seen it many times before at committee, and as it's come back in a couple of variations, back and forth with the Urban Developers Institute. So seeing nobody else ringing in, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries, and I believe we have one more reading. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you. I'll move that council give third reading to Bylaw C-1100-186, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on that third and final reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. That takes us to item 6.2, Bylaw C-1100-194, Land Use Bylaw Amendment. I'd call this public hearing to order and look for an introduction from administration. Stuart, is this you again?
Sorry, Mayor Given, I believe this one is the associated amendment is 1100-186 for the entrance features.
We did all, we handled the municipal development plan amendments, 1237C and the two readings of 1100-186. So we're moving on to item 6.2, C-1100-194.
Okay, my apologies.
Yeah, we're, we're efficient.
And I had a great presentation ready. Okay, thank you, Mayor Given. Bylaw C-1100-194, amendment to the land use bylaw. Again, this bylaw has been initiated by city administration. Administration has reviewed the current provisions of the land use bylaw in respect to the processing of requests for new telecommunication facilities, which would also include cell towers and masts. The, the current provisions in the land use bylaw identify a development permit process to, to deal with such requests when they do come forward. Through the research that administration has undertaken, it has been identified that Industry Canada is the decision-making authority for such requests with a requirement for proponents of new communication facilities to consult with the local municipality. This is covered under Industry Canada circular, CPC 2003, entitled "Radio Communication and Broadcasting Antenna Systems." Within this circular, it does actually outline requirements for what proponents have to do to address what Industry Canada is looking for when an application is made for new telecommunication facilities to, to the federal jurisdiction. So the current process that's outlined in the land use bylaw is not necessary because the city does not have the jurisdiction to make decisions on these facilities, and also even to go through an appeal process. It's not the city's ultimate decision on matters of this nature. So Bylaw C-1100-194 provides updated provisions relating to the city's role in this process and preferences for accommodating new telecommunication facilities within the city. The purpose is to provide the city and proponents of these facilities direction as to what the city's preferences are for any new requests in order that the city can hopefully forward a letter of support to Industry Canada when the request is received. The proposed revisions that are included in C-1100-194 include preferences for co-location of antennas on existing masts where possible. Where that is not possible, that preference for location of antennas on existing buildings, ideally on the rooftop or other structures where possible. Preference for location of new masts and towers in commercial industrial areas, really to, to the extent possible to protect the residential neighborhoods, and suggested a preferred setback of at least six times the tower height when it is for new masts or towers to the boundary of a residential land use district. Preference that new antennas, masts should not be located in front yards. The encouragement for monopole design for new masts when they are required, rather than the, the actual lattice design, which is a, a lot more imposing on the, on the visual amenities of the area. And the support for any attempt or efforts for camouflage techniques where possible to try and blend masts into the surroundings. These considerations that are being proposed are in accordance with the actual Industry Canada recommendations, so private industry is already familiar with such provisions. The bylaw amendment also includes a proposed outline of the application submission requirements the city would be looking for, the public consultation requirements with the onus being put on the proponent to actually undertake this process with the city's assistance, and that is following a default Industry Canada requirement where there's nothing in place with the municipality. Also, there's an outline of the processing for the applicant's request indicating that applications would still come forward to the Community Growth Committee, but not as a development permit application. It would be a request coming from the development officers in respect of either a support or opposition letter to be sent to Industry Canada, because again, just reiterating that the municipality cannot actually make a decision on these matters, can only actually put forward recommendations or comments to Industry Canada. And also, there's a proposed fee for new requests when they are received by the city for $1,000 per application. Council gave first reading to this bylaw on March 18th, 2013. In accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Government Act, the bylaw has been advertised for two consecutive weeks in the local newspaper. There haven't been any inquiries or objections received. Administration didn't actually go direct to, to companies to, to actually communicate or contact with them, because again, the, the information that you see in this proposed bylaw amendment is in accordance with the requirements of Industry Canada, that if they're not including the land use bylaw, then the proponent for a new system would actually have to follow these in any case. So with all that information, administration recommends that city council gives bylaw C-1100-194 second and third readings for amendments to the land use bylaw relating to telecommunication facilities.
Thanks very much, Mr. Wright. Opportunity for questions, if council has any for administration at this time. Again, this is another issue that council had seen at committee in some of our land use bylaw discussions previously, so I don't know if any council members had any new information or any additional requests for information or questions. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Mr. Wright, the $1,000 application fee, just right off the hop, it seems a little steep. Is that, is that average price for an application Is that, is that average price for an application fee? And further that, does, if we deny the application, I guess, do they forfeit the cash?
Mayor Given, yeah, Councillor Gustafson, it's with research that municipalities are charging a similar fee on the basis, I think that the idea is that rather than what can typically happen when each company wants a mast themselves and to actually put their own antenna on and then not allow sort of co-sharing of that mast in the future, it's almost not a great deterrent, but say that, you know, to actually give consideration or more consideration to actually trying to work between companies. There's so much competition, but what's happening, this is province-wide, this is countrywide, that municipalities are experiencing that companies are coming in for their own masts, numerous masts, and say that they can't share. So this has been a review of other municipalities. It is seen as a reasonable fee and also in respect of your question that that would be the situation, it is an application fee or a fee for their city to consider it, and it would be non-refundable if, because again, the city would not be the decision-making authority. The city would be sending a letter of attestation to Industry Canada, either in support or against the actual request. So either way, we have to go through the process, we have to send the letter, and then Industry Canada will decide thereafter.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Okay. Any further questions for administration? We'll have a brief opportunity then at the close, just before the close of the public hearing. I'd open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. If there's anybody that'd like to come forward to speak to this matter in opposition or in support, I can say that I don't see anybody moving forward. And we've, all the faces in our crowd, I know why they were here, so I'm going to close the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. We'd move into business arising, and I'd look for a motion for second reading. Councillor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council give second reading to bylaw C 1100-194 being an amendment to the land use bylaw. In speaking to that, I support the standards and the process that administration has drafted up to be included in our land use bylaw. This has been an issue that's coming up more and more frequently at committee meetings where communication towers are going up, and more often than not, you get at least one member of the public who has a contentious issue with that tower's location, and this will help to help to sort out those kind of problems because now we'll have a formal process and formal notification that these towers are going up.
Thanks very much, Councillor Wong. So a motion for second reading, any discussion or debate on that second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Wong?
I'll move third reading of bylaw C 1100-194.
Thanks very much, Councillor Wong. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on third reading? Thank you. And that motion carries. And I believe that finishes all of our public hearings for this evening. We had no unfinished business, and that takes us into our reports. Item 8.1, bylaw C 1100-192, a land use bylaw amendment. This is for first reading and to set date and time, but we'll have a brief introduction from administration. Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Bylaw C 1100-192, as you say, is a first reading bylaw relating to a proposal to rezone two properties in the Smith neighborhood, Juno Estates subdivision area, from residential medium density to RG general residential. And the recommendation is that city council give bylaw C 1100-192 first reading and establish Monday, May 13 at 6:30 PM in council chambers as a date, time, and location for a public hearing.
Thanks very much, Mr. McIntyre. Motion for first reading, Councillor Rice?
I would move first reading of bylaw C 1100-192 to amend the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. So a motion for first reading, there's no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Rice?
I would move council establish Monday, May 13, 2013 at 6:30 PM in council chambers as the date, time, and location for a public hearing for bylaw C 1100-192.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate as to date, time, and location proposed for that public hearing? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. And we move on to 8.2, bylaw C 1237-D, municipal development plan amendment. And again, this is another item for first reading to set date, time, and location. Mr. McIntyre, do you want to give us an introduction?
Mayor Given, the intention of this bylaw amendment is to amend the municipal development plan, future land use map, to redesignate a parcel of land that was identified as a potential hospital site in the Arbor Hills area structure plan area, and it was designated as public service or institutional. And the intention is to redesignate the site, which, given that the hospital has now been relocated to another part of the city, to designate this site to commercial. And therefore, the amendment would need to align with, or is needed to align with proposed amendments to the area structure plan in that, in that area structure plan area for consistency's sake. And the recommendation is that this bylaw, C 1237-D, be given first reading and Monday, April 29, 2013 at 6:30 PM. As council chambers be established as a date, time, and location for a public hearing.
Thanks very much, Mr. McIntyre. So I'll look for a motion for first reading of that municipal development plan amendment. Councillor Munro?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that council give first reading to bylaw C 1237-D.
Thanks very much, Councillor Munro. Again, this is first reading, and so there'll be no discussion or debate, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Munro, to set date, time, and location?
Thanks again, Mayor Given. I'll move that council establish Monday, April 29, 2013 at 6:30 PM at council chambers as the date, time, and location for a public hearing for bylaw C 1237-D.
Thanks very much, Councillor Munro. Any discussion or debate as to date, time, and location? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that finishes all of our reports items and takes us into committee business. Our first committee up was the Pursuit of Excellence Committee for March 22, and Councillor McLean, I believe that was your set of minutes?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes. Pursuit of Excellence Committee meeting held March 22.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions? Councillor Rice?
I have a question. It relates to 3.3. I was somewhat puzzled by that. All of the other applications seem to be to improve the skills in various ways. However, this one almost seems to be that we're paying someone so we can send them to another community to, for their skills. It doesn't seem to fit with the rest of them.
Councillor Munro?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll speak to that to Councillor Rice. The committee thought this was a good one to go forward on as well. He'd be trying for the under-19 Wolf Pack in Edmonton for rugby, and he's got to try to make this qualification, so that means he'd be representing the centers from City Grand Prairie if he makes the team. So he has to show up and to make it for development. So I think it's a good one, and I don't see no problem. I think it falls suit, and the committee thought so too. It was carried unanimously.
So he would be representing Grand Prairie, or he would just be a boy from Grand Prairie on the team?
Oh, he'd be an individual on the team, just like a lot of them come on for nationals when they're on teams, for polo or whatever it may be. There's tons we allocate that are on Canadian national team or teams for Alberta.
Councillor Rice? Okay. Thanks very much. Anything further on the minutes? Anyone note any errors or omissions on the minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on that set of minutes. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor McLean, anything else you want to highlight?
Yes, Mayor Given, this was a pretty full Pursuit of Excellence Committee meeting. There was some funding given out. One was for the South Peace Volleyball Club for coach development. I do believe it's in Calgary. This is really looked at by the committee very strongly. There's six or eight individuals taking two vehicles and going to do coach development. Funding was awarded for $2,309.58. As well, for athlete development was Jordan Mans. He prepared for the Canada Summer Games of $1,000. Another one was Patrick Suck for athlete development funding for $1,000 for the rugby that Councillor Rice was referring to. So that's a very good one as well for our centers. Another one was for Bill Nash, coach development funding for $314.36. Another one was for, there's a few more here. Kenny Deck, athlete development funding, $1,000 for snowboarding. She's an up-and-comer, and so they could be very good things here. Another one, the name was heard before, was as well for Ryan Sheenan for athlete development for $1,000. She's one of the top-ranked in Canada. He's from the Grand Prairie area, gymnastics training, and I think he specializes in trampoline. As well, another one was Sarah Christie's freestyle skating for athlete travel funding for $400. And another one, which I was good to see it's starting to come back, was for Grand Prairie Lacrosse Association clinic funding for $1,000. And then after that, council, there was scholarships, and there was a couple awarded out. There was four that went for the Bob Newfeld Scholarship funding. Not everybody got it, only two this time. I believe it split from spring to fall, and some are asked to reapply, but Jordan Mans for track and field as well received $1,000. And Kenny Deck for snowboarding received $1,000 as well for the Bob Newfeld Scholarship funding. And there was one given out for the Perky McCullough International Scholarship funding. There's actually two in a year, and usually it's one in the spring, one in the fall. And it was for Catherine Stone, biathlon, for $2,500. And four applied for that as well, and the rest were asked to apply again in the fall. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. That takes us to Municipal Government Day Committee from March 27, and I believe that was Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I have a recommendation, the council received the minutes for the Municipal Government Day Committee meeting held March 27, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions? Anyone spotted?
No, it looks pretty good. Looks good.
Okay, thank you. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole?
So a recommendation that council approve the 2013 Municipal Government Day event to be held Wednesday, June 12, 2013 at Muscosiapi Park, and the theme would be 99 years and counting.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, and seeing that it's pretty much true, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And Councillor O'Toole, I believe you had one further motion?
Yes, I've got the council, I'd like the council to approve the 2013 Municipal Government Day program, and if I could, I would just bring up a couple highlights. We were going to encourage the lawn bowling association to make use of the bowling greens that particular day. Also, a possibility of a horseshoe tournament. We've got all these forms of entertainment, and that sometimes they just don't be, aren't used in the presence of other people of the community. We were looking at, looking at getting horse and buggy rides in this, on that particular day, and we want to definitely continue on with the Good Neighbor Award, crime prevention in neighborhood associations. That was an outstanding event last year, and we want to encourage the future growth of that. And also, take a seat, make a friend. It's kind of a conversation pit, so if you're not sure of your neighbor and you want to meet and greet, there's an opportunity there as well.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. So a motion for council to approve the Municipal Government Day program for 2013. Any discussion or debate to see Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanted, I could have spoke to the agenda before, but we were awarded a award of excellence for Municipal Government Day. I believe the only city or town that celebrates this Municipal Government Day as well. And I don't know where that beautiful trophy went and pictures, except if the mayor did AUMA, and it was accepted at the county conference in the fall. But it'd be sure nice to bring them out in our front display when the Municipal Government Day is on. Thank you.
I can tell you it's right in front of the mayor's administrative assistance office.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions, or comments on the proposed agenda activities? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Was there anything else for you to highlight from that set of minutes, Councillor O'Toole?
At the meeting itself, we had a delegation, and they were from the Get Active Network, and they noted that the 2012 Amazing Race event was very successful, and they would like to continue again. And this year, they're going to cut the number or limit the number to 15 teams. And they have a whole vast assortment of challenges for all ages of people, so it won't be, you have to be an athlete, you have to be mindful and agile, but...
So council doesn't qualify?
Well, there's a set of rules and a games for us as well, so...
Oh, there's also, there's a separate set of games? Okay.
And we're inviting other community councils to attend that day as well.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. So we'd move on to 9.3, Special Combat sports commission. Councillor O'Toole?
Yes. Recommend that council receive the minutes from the Special Combat sports commission being held March 29, 2013. And I can just, if I can explain a couple of reasons why we had this meeting. The promoter that was holding an event later that weekend wanted to announce another event later on in the year, so he wanted to make that part of his hype for the night, and we were able to conduct the meeting that day and worked out in his favor, so...
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. So we move on then, sorry, excuse me, we had a motion for, you made that motion, thank you. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. The motion to accept those minutes passes, and we move on to item 9.4, the council committee of the whole from April 1, 2013. We need a motion to receive that set of minutes. Councillor Rice?
I move that council receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole committee meeting held April 1, 2013. This was a special meeting. The Century Play Project organizers had met with council asking for a gift in kind for, to put on the Century Play during the 100th anniversary workshop. And this was at, you dealt with this on April 1, and as well, we had a presentation from the PricewaterhouseCoopers and CEI architect on the Crystal Center economic assessment, and that'll be coming back to us.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. As Councillor Rice noted, all the items of business out of that, from that meeting were dealt with at that city council meeting on April 1. That takes us to item 9.5, the Community Growth Committee. Councillor Radver, and I believe you were the acting chairperson for that meeting. Would you care to move that set of minutes?
Certainly, Mayor Given. Thank you very much. I move council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Committee meeting held April 2, 2013, with the name change, with one change, and that being the name change on the top of page two. I believe it was Mr. W. Ailing, Grand Prairie Life Theatre Manager, not Mr. Wade Pelat.
Great. Thanks very much for that catch. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Anyone notice anything else out of place, except for that one that Councillor Radver mentioned, which we've caught now? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion to accept that set of minutes passes. And Councillor Radver, anything you want to highlight from that meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. Three things that I'll highlight. One, that I guess committee directed admin to defer consideration of paid parking at the Crystal Center until such time as a decision is made on the Crystal Center expansion project. Committee directed admin to invite all councillors to attend... Committee directed admin to invite all councilors to attend or take part in the Take Part, Take Pride by Annual Community Tour. And finally, admin directed our council committee and directed admin to enter into negotiations with Aqua Terra to invest in funding the Hundred and Sixth Street sanitary sewer trunk. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Radver. And I believe that takes us to nine point six, and the Community Living Committee from April second. Council Crokin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee held April second, twenty thirteen.
Thanks very much, Council Crokin. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Anyone note anything out of place? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Council Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move council approve the five-year lease agreement with the Grand Prairie Curling Center for the operation of the curling facility located at one oh one, two seven, Ninety-Ninth Avenue in Grand Prairie.
Thanks very much, Council Crokin. Any discussion or debate on the motion? This is one of our outstanding items that's been on our list for probably more than a year, year and a half, or two I'm seeing from administration, so good to finally tie this piece of business off with Grand Prairie Curling Club. Any further or other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also move council approve the Northwest FASD Network Leadership Team to award the grant funds from the proposed project RFP dash zero six dash four three one dash thirteen, the FASD Support and Services, to the following agencies within Region Eight for a total of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand and eighty-eight dollars. And the first allocation will be the Grand Prairie Family Education Society in the amount of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, Grand Prairie. And two, pardon me if I, it's the Essent, Wachee, Windwalk Nation of Canada, a hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-four in grand cash. I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong. And number three is the Canadian Mental Health at sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. And that's in Grand Prairie. And just speak to that, Mayor Given. That's some flow-through money that we, that are applied for and we allocate on behalf of the province.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Crokin. Yeah, I believe that's accurate. We act as the community agency, essentially the banker for this organization, and because we're holding the money, we're moving it through an RFP process, I think, and so that's what comes to council for approval.
That's correct.
Thanks, Council Crokin. Any further discussion or debate on the award of these provincial dollars? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Crokin, you have another fairly long item of business.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council award the following agencies funding as per RFP dash zero nine dash thirty-one dash thirteen outreach and support services initiative, the OSSIs that was referred to, and that funding will be on a two-year contract from May first, two thousand and thirteen to March thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, for a total of two million, fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, based on funding allocation from the province of Alberta Human Services to follow, as follows. Year one, the Canadian Mental Health Association, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Center Point Facilitation, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. Salvation Army, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and eight dollars. Now, in the same contract. Year two, Canadian Mental Health Association, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight. Center Point Facilitation, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars even, and Salvation Army, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Thanks very much, Council Crokin. Any discussion?
And again, it's, it's our responsibility to facilitate the flow-through of these, these funds. And it also gives them a two-year for, for any funding for staff and rentals, so they do have, there's two years of security, secured funding.
Thanks very much, Council Crokin. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Thanks very much, Council Crokin. Was there anything else from that set of minutes that you wanted to highlight?
Yeah, there was one, one other one, Mayor Given. We had a presentation by the Mighty Peace Mini We Youth Group Presentation. And goodness gracious, we had two mighty me's, mighty mini we's. We had Ms. Curtis and Ms. Krennic from the Mighty Peace Mini We Youth Group ambassadors. They made a presentation to our committee regarding the opportunity to host a Mighty Peace Day on October thirty-first, twenty thirteen. The youth group is seeking council support and/or gift in kind from the city, and such as a provision of the Crystal Center as a venue for their event. And this is going to be for all through our, the North Peace area, including the Peace River and High Level, Grand Cash, the whole district. So Ms. Jane Cadda Sharp was there and they're, they're discussing costs and gift in kinds and it's unknown at this time. So they made a great presentation and wishing them all the best.
Thanks very much, Council Crokin. Council Rice, did you have a question on Council Crokin's presentation? I'm sorry, enter your microphone there.
I'm, one point two, I'm just wondering why it was referred to a future committee meeting as opposed to the budget session.
Council Crokin?
The seven hundred thousand? Or the hundred thousand for the three years?
Well, both.
The, are you talking about the Odyssey House?
Yeah.
So the committee actually requested some additional information, which I believe is coming back this week. So it was actually referred to a future committee meeting with a request for administration to provide information on previous city of Grand Prairie support and potential funding sources. So it was just referred for saying, hey, we need some additional information before we make a decision one way or another about it.
Okay.
Right there.
And I believe, I believe that information is coming tomorrow.
Yep.
Council Radver?
That report is at committee meeting tomorrow and has a recommendation to refer to budget action.
Okay. This seemed like a circuitous way to get to the budget.
We get there one way or the other.
Okay. Any further questions or comments on that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, then we'd move on to the Community Safety Committee from April ninth. And Council Wong, I believe that's your set of minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee Meeting held April ninth, twenty thirteen.
Thanks very much, Council Wong. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Anything out of place? Any errors or omissions? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Wong?
Yes, and I'm going to declare a conflict for the next two items. My employer is the manager of the contract for the city, so Council O'Toole or Council Crokin can take over for me.
Council O'Toole? If you'd like to handle items nine point seven point one and nine point seven point two.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. So regards to nine point seven point one, full-depth reclamation tender. Recommendation is council award tender T dash eighteen dash five five two dash one three for the twenty thirteen road rehabilitation and overlay program. Full-depth reclamation, FDR, sites to Canalsen Rock Products GP Limited in the amount of four million, forty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and six cents, excluding GST, as the lowest and qualified tender meeting the city's specifications.
Okay. Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Council Rice?
Um...
Be gentle with me here.
I'm not, no. It seems, my, the first thing that pops into my mind is a hundred and twenty-fourth Avenue. Was this not the same company that didn't finish a hundred and twenty-fourth Avenue last year?
This system that they're going to be using will have a machine that goes down and can do it a whole lot quicker.
This is, this is where they actually go through, essentially grind up the surface and relay it, if I remember correctly.
They add a little bit of material and fluid and it's done quite a bit faster.
Well, one would hope so. Are we, I mean, do we have some sort of finish it on time or we'll get really cranky clause in there?
Yes, that was discussed and yes, there is a clause.
I see the Acting Director of Community Safety, Mr. Monroe, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah. There you go. Council Rice, just to answer some of your questions there. Yes, it was the same company as had previously been hired to do some work last year. They are coming back to complete the work. Engineering provided us an update at our Community Safety Committee Meeting. And they had indicated that they had been aware of some of the issues that presented last fall. And some of the delays were unrelated or weather-related and not necessarily because of performance. That being said, they specifically mentioned with this tender contract that there was some timelines that were revised as opposed to previous work and a commitment's been made that they deemed acceptable for the tenders be accepted by the city.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Monroe. I see Council Monroe, who was actually speaking to this item at the, at the committee as well. Council Monroe?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Given. And I'll, two things. I'll just echo what Chris had said there and that administration definitely reassured us that the work would be completed this year. I think it should also be noted, though, that, just going from memory here, I believe that this was about half a million dollars less than the next qualified bidder.
Council Rice?
Well, be that as it may, and certainly I don't want to squander money, but as I stated in the previous discussion, I've seen cut lines in better condition than that road was left. So, you know, sometimes you get what you pay for.
So I think as has been highlighted, these were questions that were brought up to the committee. I think there were a number of council members that were in, saw the issue the same way and had the same concern. And administration, as Chris said, had sort of revised some timelines based on those concerns and they were comfortable that this would proceed. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Okay, I'm looking for one more there, council.
Dan's not there.
Oh, excuse me, thank you. Okay, without Council Wong then, that's all of our votes. That motion carries. Council O'Toole, you had another one.
Okay, nine point seven point two.
Thanks, and sorry, Council Wong, you'll have to get your microphone there.
There you go, sorry. Nine point seven point two, the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen road rehabilitation phase one. Council, I would recommend council award tender T dash nineteen dash five five two dash one three for the twenty thirteen, fourteen road rehabilitation and overlay program, phase one rehab sites to Rico Construction, twenty ten limited, in the amount of four billion, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and...
I believe Councilor O'Toole said million.
Four million, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-six cents, excluding GST, as the lowest qualified tender meeting the city's specifications.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on this motion? One thing I would say is I believe that there's, there, as is noted in the title of the motion, there will be a phase two that will come around with additional sites. And the administration said that we would be seeing that later on. So this four million dollars is only for phase one of the program. There'll still be a second phase with additional dollars and additional sites coming forward.
And just letting you know, the map was included and the sites were located, described at the meeting, so I'm not aware of them at this point.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. That's eight votes, thank you very much. That motion carries. And I think that handles those two items of business that Council Wong had declared a conflict of interest for, so invite him back into the chambers. Thanks very much, Council O'Toole.
Thank you.
Council Wong, we're on to nine point seven point three?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council adopt the Community Knowledge Campus Parking Layout Plan. That should be attached to the agenda. If not, it was attached to the minutes of the Community Safety Meeting. Basically shows a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and twelve stalls just to the west of the public high school, another thirty-two southwest of the new public high school, and a hundred and twenty stalls south of the new, or the south, the new parking lot of the East Link Center. And that would be for staff and that will essentially free up eighty to a hundred and, eighty to a hundred stalls that staff are using at the, at the East Link Center and the Gymnix building in, in the regular parking.
Thanks very much, Council Wong. So a motion to approve the parking layout plan. Council Rice?
Do we charge staff for this parking?
At this time, we don't, we don't charge any staff of any city department for the parking.
To tell the art dealer in the library that...
Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple of questions. I wasn't here on this committee meeting and I'm quite intrigued. We hear lots about parking. There's not enough parking at the East Link Center, but a lot of it's just people don't want to walk two minutes. There's a lot of parking and we're with scores with the, the school system right to the south of St. Joe's and it's three quarters empty every evening. So I think this is going to be a great debated one in two thousand and fourteen, or in the budget coming up in the fall. And really, it should be really looked at. I can see maybe potential some, but some, you know, there's just underutilization of some. All you have to do is cross the street. I got two little girls, they hold my hand, takes about two minutes, and we always got parking. So the one point two million I'm really wondering about, but glad to send it off to the fall deliberations and people can maybe walk a minute.
Okay, any further discussion or debate on the parking layout plan? Just to remind council, the layout plan is one of the results of the survey or detailed study that we did around parking and traffic requirements around the CKC site, and so this is an implementation of it. The second part of the plan, in addition to the sites that Council Wong mentioned, which are city of Grand Prairie built and constructed sites, the Public School Board will also be constructing a significant number of sites in accordance with the requirements for them building the second public high school. Any further discussion or debate on adopting the parking layout plan? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then Council Wong, you had that second portion of the motion.
Yes, I move that council refer two million and thirty-four thousand dollars to the two thousand and fourteen fall budget deliberations for design and construction of geometric road upgrades and additional thirty-two parking stalls in Lot C, the additional hundred and twelve parking stalls in Lot E, and a hundred and twenty energized staff parking stalls in Lot B during the summer of two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Wong. Council Radver?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Sorry I wasn't at that committee meeting, but I'm assuming that there are school parking stalls in addition to these that is being funded through the money schools get for schools.
Council Wong?
Absolutely, they are, they're, the school parking lot is just to the west of our parking lot B, which is the hundred and twenty staff parking stall, parking stalls.
Going from memory on the, on the immediate south side, we're, we're building one lot. The Public School Board is essentially matching that. And then the Public School Board's also building a very significant student parking lot on the outside of the Ring Road, basically along sixty-eighth Ave.
Good, thank you.
Any further discussion or debate on this motion of referral? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Wong, you had one item left.
Yes, I move that council approve increasing the Transportation Services Snow Removal Budget by seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred dollars to hire local qualified snow removal and hauling contractors to provide additional snow removal crews in residential areas during winters above average snowfall. In speaking briefly to this, Mayor Given, the snow removal has been a topic of review for several years. There have been several things that have been done to try to improve the service. What we have been noticing is a steady, a steady and unpredictable snowfall. In the past five years, it's, it's pretty interesting to note that the, the contingency amount that's set up for snow has never been underutilized. It's always been overutilized. So this additional amount will be especially helpful. You know, there, there were things set up in the past like snow routes which had helped, but this really will address the issue of the size of our city and how quickly it's growing. These, this crew is designed specifically for residential areas, or primarily for residential areas. It will allow administration flexibility so they can divert these crews to priority roads if necessary, if we get a major dump of snow. roads if necessary, if we get a, a major dump of snow right away. It also gives them the flexibility within that budget to not use it. I know that we've had a few complaints when the weather got really nice and a grader would go by someone's house. People are doing their job, they're getting paid whether or not, whether or not they're going to move the snow off of your, out of your neighborhood at that time, because it is a fixed budget amount. This is a contracted amount, so this amount is, provides administration that flexibility to, to put it away for the future in years that we get above-average snowfall.
Great, thanks very much, Counsel Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just speaking of this motion, I'm certainly supportive of the motion. As I looked at it, I noted that this year we went over budget about this amount of money, because we had a heavy snowfall year. So, if we have another one, we'll be on budget. And if we're not, then maybe we can, as Counsel Wong said, have some flexibility to add some service to our residential areas and, and improve service. So, I think it's a prudent, prudent recommendation. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Reverend. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. What I understand, it's approximately one crew for eight possible weeks, and that's what that labor comes to, that costs, right?
They gave us an average, what, what a crew would look like. It would look like four plows, four loaders, and four dump trucks, but for, for eight weeks, but that could be, they have flexibility to, to change up that combination.
So, it doesn't happen necessarily all in, in a row. It could be two weeks here, two weeks there, and then three weeks, and then a week.
That's right.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think it's a very good step forward. The snow removal's been really good the last two years. It's really been on top of its game. They've been, I think, two or three times in front of my, where I live, and I think lots of areas, just because, I don't live right on the bus route, but they've been there doing a bus route close to my area. I also think that this council's done a great job for, supposed to be a, a second snow landfill in, say, on the northwest area. And that's been delayed a bit because the annexation process, but this would help in time travels of clearing the snow off the roads, and as well, safety as workers. So, when this process does go forward and annexation is brought to the government, I do believe this will help as well greatly in the numbers.
Thanks very much, Counsel McLean. Any further discussion on this recommendation? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. Counsel Wong, anything else you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
I think everything that was covered in those minutes were, had actual items that were dealt with today, so that's it.
Thanks very much, Counsel Wong. Seeing, seeing nothing, then we'll move on to Corporate Services Committee. And Counsel Radburn, I hope you have a glass of water there. You have a number of, number of motions to make. Counsel Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held April ninth, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Anything out of order? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Okay, so get your voting fingers ready about thirty times in the next few minutes. So, first of all, is Bylaw C-1283, Business Tax and Assessment, 2013 Bylaw.
Okay, motion for first reading on the BRZ.
The first three are BRZ-related. So, I'll go, I'll, I'll proceed.
Counsel Radburn?
I move council give first reading to Bylaw 1283, Business Tax and Assessment Bylaw. Just to very quickly, I'll do a one-sentence intro to each of these. This provides authorization for the imposition of, of tax and assessment in regards to businesses operating in the downtown BRZ of the City of Grand Prairie.
Okay, so, so I see Counselor Rice. So, now, Counselor Rice declares a conflict of interest, and we'll leave the council chambers.
Need first reading.
With emphasis. Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. This is a standing piece of business that the city does, actually, all of these are standing business that the city does each and every year.
Annually.
Okay, so a motion for first reading, I'll call for a vote. Okay, votes. Thank you, and Counsel Radburn?
I move council give second reading to Bylaw C-1283, Business Tax and Assessment, 2013 Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Just speaking of this, this essentially is a bylaw that allows us to assess businesses in the BRZ zone, in the downtown zone. And when it says business tax, it's really referring to the fees that we collect for the operation of the BRZ. Any other discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Radburn?
I would move council have third reading of Bylaw C-1283, Business Tax and Assessment, 2013 Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. So, a motion to have third reading of this bylaw here tonight, a motion to have reading, the third reading of a bylaw on the same night as the first two readings must be unanimous in order to carry on. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having third reading here tonight? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counsel Radburn?
Thank you. I move council give third reading to Bylaw C-1283, Business Tax and Assessment, 2013 Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Motion for third reading, any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries.
Thank you. Moving right along, Bylaw C-1284, Downtown BRZ Business Tax, 2013 Bylaw. This authorizes the city to impose a tax on businesses within the downtown BRZ for 2013.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. A motion for first reading, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counsel Radburn?
Thank you. I'd move council give second reading to Bylaw C-1284, Downtown BRZ Tax, 2013 Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. So, a motion for second reading, open for discussion and debate. Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries. Counsel Radburn?
Thank you. I would move council have third reading of Bylaw C-1284, Downtown BRZ Tax, 2013 Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. So, as with the previous motion, this is a motion to have third reading of the bylaw here tonight, and as with the previous, it must be unanimous for it to pass. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries.
Good. I would move council give third reading to Bylaw C-1284, Downtown BRZ Tax, 2013 Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Reverend. So, a motion to for third reading, discussion and debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Counsel Radburn?
Thank you.
Nine point eight point three.
Now, we go, now, Bylaw C-1285, Downtown BRZ Business Tax Rate, 2013 Bylaw. So, this bylaw establishes a 2013 BRZ tax rate. It actually worked out to 2.17 percent, and that amount of money ensures BRZ tax, BRZ budget requirements are met and city admin costs are addressed. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. So, a motion for first reading, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries. Counsel Radburn?
Thank you. I would move council give second reading to Bylaw C-1285, Downtown BRZ Business Tax Rate, 2013 Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. So, a motion for second reading, open for discussion and debate. Seeing nothing, one thing that I would note is that this essentially responds to the budget that was approved by the Downtown Association Board of Directors and, and their membership at their annual general meeting. The city basically implements that and figures out what it will take to collect the amount of money that the Downtown Association Board has requested.
Exactly.
Any further discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries. Counsel Radburn?
Thank you. I would move council have third reading of Bylaw C-1285, Downtown BRZ Business Tax Rate, 2013 Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. So, a motion to have third reading, as with the others, must be unanimous for it to carry tonight. Any discussion or debate about having a third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counsel Radburn?
Thank you. I would move council give third reading to Bylaw C-1285, Downtown BRZ Business Tax Rate, 2013 Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. So, a motion for third reading, any discussion or debate on third reading of the 2013 BRZ tax rate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. I believe that handles all of the items that were specific to the downtown association area, and so we could call back Counsel Rice. Counsel Radburn has an opportunity to have a drink of water before setting up on the next three.
Next item is nine eight four, Bylaw C-1286, 2013 Supplementary Assessment Bylaw. This is, again, is an annual process. And these two bylaws are for 2013. Basically, this allows, these two bylaws allow this, allows the city to assess and tax property having newly constructed buildings or major additions and renovations in the same tax year as they are completed and occupied. Overall, past few years, I believe the report showed it was close to $300,000 in revenues were generated through this tax, and even more in the last year. So, I would proceed with the first part, is the supplementary assessment bylaw.
I think we had a motion, I think you made the motion for first reading.
First reading, thank you.
So, a motion for first reading, I'll call for the vote.
Stop talking, Lauren.
And that motion carries. Counsel Radburn?
Thank you. I'd move council give second reading to Bylaw 1286, 2013 Supplementary Assessment Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Any, any discussion or debate on this bylaw? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council have third reading of Bylaw C-1286, 2013 Supplementary Assessment Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. As with the previous motions, this is a motion to have third reading of this bylaw here tonight, and must pass unanimously in order to be carried. I would call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Counsel Radburn?
Thank you. And finally, on this one, I move council give third reading to Bylaw C-1286, 2013 Supplementary Assessment Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that bylaw, all three readings carry, so we move on to eight, sorry, nine point eight point five, Counsel Radburn?
Thank you. And so, this is the second part, that was the assessment. Now, we're getting to the supplementary property tax bylaw. So, I would give first reading to Bylaw C-1287, 2013 Supplementary Property Tax Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Reverend. So, a motion for first reading, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. A motion carries. Counsel Radburn?
I would move council give second reading to Bylaw C-1287, 2013 Supplementary Property Tax Bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. So, a motion for second reading, open for discussion and debate. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counsel Reverend?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council have third reading of Bylaw C-1287, 2013 Supplementary Property Tax Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. So, again, a motion to have third reading of this bylaw here tonight, as with the others, must carry unanimously for it to pass. Open for discussion or debate on having third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries. So, we can have third reading. Counsel Radburn?
Good. Therefore, I would move council give third reading to Bylaw C-1287, 2013 Supplementary Property Tax Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that third, motion for third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries. Counsel Radburn?
Thank you. Moving on to nine point eight point six, Bylaw C-1289, Special Tax Levied Against Land in Pinnacle Ridge. I believe this is the third year that we've approved this, and it comes to us annually. This is a special tax levy that provides for a viable funding source for the operation and maintenance of the fountains in Pinnacle Ridge. Actually, the, their budget to maintain is about $13,360, and so this special tax levy garners those amounts of money, so that this can happen in that neighborhood. Also, just quickly, the Neighborhood Association was very active in, I guess, advocating for this, and they have remained very supportive of, of this special tax levy over the last couple of years. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. So, motion for first reading, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counsel Radburn?
Thank you. I would move council give second reading to Bylaw C-1289, Special Tax Levied Against Land in Pinnacle Ridge Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Open for discussion and debate, and the, seeing none, I know that there were members of the Neighborhood Association there to speak to it at the committee, and certainly still continue to be supportive, and I believe we have some supporters here tonight. I don't see anybody else ringing in for discussion or debate, so I'll call for the vote on second reading. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Radburn?
Thank you. I'd move council have thirty, third reading of Bylaw C-1289, Special Tax Levied Against Land in Pinnacle Ridge.
Thank you, Counsel Reverend. So, a motion again to have third reading here tonight, as with the others, must carry unanimously, unanimously in order for it to carry, to pass. Would call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. So, we can have third reading. Counsel Radburn?
Good. Thank you. I would move council give third reading to Bylaw C-1289, Special Tax Levied Against Land in Pinnacle Ridge Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. So, discussion and debate on third reading? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. That item of business is dealt with, and we'll move to nine point eight point seven.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Nine eight seven, a Senior's Property Tax Rebate. I would move that council approve for 2013 a $100 property tax rebate to those seniors who receive the Alberta Seniors Benefit Income Subsidy living in the City of Grand Prairie. We've had this four years, and I believe this will be our fifth year. It's been very well received. It, I think about 440-some last year, seniors accessed this rebate, and feedback to the city has been most positive in that regard. This money is budgeted for within our operational budget. And Alberta seniors and community supports will issue the checks on behalf of the City of Grand Prairie, and the check stubs will acknowledge the city as the rebate provider. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Reverend. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I see Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just had a question to administration or the mayor. It was brought up in the committee about the provincial government is going through the process of a deferral process of, for seniors on fixed income that need assistance and help where they defer their taxes and then pay it when they sell their home. What's the name of that, and do we know if it's coming forward sooner than later, or?
I can speak to the name of it. I mean, I would leave it to administration about whether it's coming. It is the Seniors Property Tax Deferral Program. It was announced as a part of the budget, but I'm not sure if the details about how the program is actually going to be implemented have come out yet. Mr. Anderson, do you have any additional information?
I don't think you have to be on social assistance or anything like that. I think anybody who's a senior qualifies for the program.
So, we don't know if it's been passed through legislation or anything yet, or?
From my understanding, it's in the process of being implemented.
Okay. So, I'll certainly keep an eye out for that. Thanks, Counsel McLean. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counsel Reverend?
Thank you, Mayor Given. We move to nine dot eight eight, Unaudited Financial Statements. So, there are three recommend, well, the statements show an operating surplus of $6,488,415, and that result in terms of our year-end has led to three recommendations in terms of how to deal with that operating surplus. So, the first, I guess, motion would be that council approve, this is a three-part motion, council approve the transfer of $1,059,000 to the Facility Renewal Reserve. This amount represents the portion of the 2012 operating surplus related to facility maintenance projects deferred until 2013 due to reorganization of the department. maintenance projects deferred until 2013 due to reorganization of the department. Second recommendation would be that the council, that a council approve the transfer of $4 million to the future expenditure reserve to fund the leisure center renovation capital projects, project. This would replace long-term debt as the funding source. And finally, the third part of the recommendation, it would be that council approve transfer of $1,429,415 to the Financial Stabilization Reserve as per City Policy Number 338, representing the remaining 2012 operating surplus. So, really, these recommendations deal with, with the operating surplus. I think that they were excellent recommendations. The first one dealt with Facility Reserve, and it's really because we've deferring some projects. The second, I think, the $4 million, I think it's a good thing that we have these monies available so we don't have to borrow and incur long-term debt. And finally, number three basically is our standard policy when we have surplus at year-end. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councilor Adburn. Any discussion or debate on those three recommendations essentially dealing with the 2012 year-end? Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think it's really good. We don't have to borrow for the leisure center, as Councilor Adburn said. As well, someone say, well, you got a $6 million surplus, but it's a lot better than a lot of towns in Alberta that are having that have to actually go to counties and agree with you just to stay afloat because they're nearly ready to dissolve. So, I think it's a very positive approach in administration and council, what they've done the last few years.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Any other discussion or debate? Certainly would like to highlight the fact that these positive results were really enabled by our administrative team, who kept an eye on the bottom line throughout the course of the year. I think in just about every department, as you look through the financial statements for variances, just about every department had savings due to staffing, so we certainly appreciate administration keeping a close eye on staffing, looking at positions when they could become vacant, and some of the reorganizations that have provided some savings in that area as well. We certainly appreciate the administration's work on our behalf in that area. Okay, any further discussion, debate on these three recommendations? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries, Councilor Adburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Next, I would move, there are a couple of other motions here. One is that, first one is council approve the reduction of the 2013 operating budget by $1,466,141 to adjust for long-term cost savings related to our CMP building lease, insurance costs, debt principal and interest payments, and to include increase for the piece library system per capita grant previously approved by council. So, this really is a result of the, I guess, admin review of our budget that we've had, and it has resulted in, I guess, some cost savings as they looked at that. And so, this first really motion talks about the number that we can reduce our budget by because of those cost savings.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Adburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Councilor Crokin.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Given. I just want to speak to piece, library systems, I do sit on it on behalf of council. And the extra per capita grant is, because of the increase of the population in the city of Grand Prairie, they were getting a grant at a decreased level, and I will just say, at, say, $50,000, $49,000, and now we're at $55,000. So, that's just to represent our, our citizens.
Thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Councilor Adburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given.
I recognize Councilor Rice has declared a conflict of interest on this last item. Councilor Adburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council approve an additional $100,000 in funding for the 2013 downtown sidewalk rehabilitation to the 2013 capital plan. Again, during admin's review of the budget, they noted that a commitment that had been made wasn't included in the budget, and so, this is just correcting that oversight. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Adburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. We can call back Councilor Rice.
Councilor Rice.
Councilor Adburn, I think you're just about off.
Hey, we're on the home stretch here. Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council give first reading to bylaw C1288, 2013 property tax bylaw. In speaking to this motion, Mayor Given, the above two motions approvals that we just did, plus the addition of the $765,000 to the transportation services snow removal budget to hire locally qualified snow removal and hauling contractors to provide additional snow removal crews in residential areas during winters of above-average snowfall, those changes were incorporated before this, the property tax bylaw was finalized. Also, the other circumstance or context to this that has changed is that we had a real growth assessment increase higher than the original budget. All those factors has, has reduced the property tax increase for 2013 to 1.56 percent, resulting in an average residential property owner paying $56 more next year, which is $4.67 per month. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Adburn. Motion for first reading, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries, Councilor Adburn.
Thank you. I would move council give second reading to bylaw C1288, 2013 property tax bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Adburn. Motion for second reading, open for discussion, debate, Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm very proud of this, that we're down to 1.56 from this council administration. Just one question maybe to Ken, Mr. Ken Anderson, what, for property tax increase, is this the lowest in how many years? Do we know that number?
For administration, Mr. Anderson?
Well, I've been here 11 years, it's the lowest I've had.
Okay, thank you very much, Ken.
Thanks very much, Mr. Anderson. Any further discussion or debate on the motion for second reading? Councilor Wong.
Yes, I'd also like maybe the Director of Corporate Services to comment on how this affects the dollar value of someone's, or what they're paying for their property taxes. Is this blended between their assessment and, and the operational cost of the city?
Mr. Anderson?
Is this the total increase that a person will see?
Yes, it's the total increase they'll see in their total tax bill.
Right, so even if your assessment went up greater than 1.56 percent, you're not going to pay more than 1.56?
Well, we based on the average, the average assessment's gone up 6 percent, so if your assessment's gone up more than 6 percent, then you would pay more. If your assessment's gone up less than 6 percent, you would pay less.
Okay, that's understandable.
Yeah, it's, Mr. Anderson, I don't know, maybe you can speak about how typically we try to deal with what the impact of the increase will be on an average household, but speak about how there's a, very difficult to define an average difference in classes?
Well, the average house for 2013 is assessed at $295,000, and that's a 6 percent increase from the prior year. So, what we do is we automatically discount the tax rate by 6 percent so that we don't pick up any taxes on the increased and assessed value.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Anderson, Councilor Rice.
Refresh my memory, what's the school portion this year?
Mr. Anderson?
School portion's probably around 30 percent.
Did it go up or down, or where did, where did we end up in that?
Mr. Anderson?
I can't recall at this point.
Yeah, I think if, if I'm remembering correctly from the provincial budget, they were collecting an additional $44,000 to $100,000 from Grand Prairie in terms of what they expected to collect, so in terms of the scope of our budget, it's pretty minor.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
It's probably slightly higher than the municipal piece, but it has been traditionally lower for the last few years.
Thank you.
Okay, so any further discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Councilor Adburn.
Thank you. Mayor Given, I would move council have third reading of bylaw C1288, 2013 property tax bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Adburn. So, this is our final one, where we needed to have, or we could have three readings in the same night. This motion to have third reading here tonight must carry unanimously, unanimously in order to pass. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries, Councilor Adburn.
And finally, thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council give third reading to bylaw C1288, 2013 property tax bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Adburn. So, motion for third reading, any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Councilor Adburn, was there anything on that agenda?
There was, I think, something else, but I've had enough full time. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Councilor Adburn. I believe that handles all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence. We had two delegations tonight, one of which, the delegation business for the EMS week was obviously handled. Councilor Rice.
I would move that we declare April 28th Day of Mourning in Grand Prairie to honor those injured or killed in workplace accidents, and further that we fly the flag at City Hall, and further that we have a ceremony at 11:00 a.m.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Rice. So, this would respond to the request from our QP local, Mr. Wong, who stuck it out through all of the readings of the tax bylaws, Randy, thanks very much. I'll call for the vote on that motion dealing with delegation business. And that motion carries, thanks very much, Councilor Rice. We had no notices of motion tonight, and that takes us to council member reports, and I believe we had just Senator 2000 from Councilor Wong.
Thank you, Mayor Given. On April 10th, the Senator 2000 board had a meeting. We talked about three major issues there. We had quite a long agenda, but these are the three that are worth mentioning. First thing is that we plan to have the roof reassessed this year. A number of years ago, there was some damage due to leakage, and it wasn't really concrete in terms of what, what actually caused the damage. It could have been the shingles, could have been the eaves trough, the fact that the eaves trough ran into the building and then back out of the building. There were some issues. There was a report done at that time and a repair done shortly after that, and no issues have come up. Now, the city has budgeted $200,000 and has set it aside to redo the roof, and we're not sure whether or not all that is going to be necessary now, so that's the reason why we want to have it reassessed, just to make sure that dollars are being spent where they need to be spent. The second thing that we would like to do this year is take a look at the paving stones out around the backside of the building. There's always heaving due to, well, that's just the nature of heaving, of paving stones from what I've been told. We can't afford to have the place, or have that sidewalk all filled in with concrete, so we're just going to see if we can get it repaired this year, which will, you know, keep it good for another three to five years. The last thing that we discussed was the upgrades that were done at Senator 2000. We had a number of grants come in. The kitchen upgrade and the technology in the Al Roberts Room are pretty much finished. We're planning to do an official celebration, so an official launch to show off everything that's been done, and at that time, we'll also recognize all the funding partners. Some, some members of council have already been in the Al Robertson Room and seen some of the neat technology, and we'll be able to showcase it more during this official launch. That's everything.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. I don't believe we had any other reports from external boards or agencies, and so, we'll move into council member roundtable, and we'll start with Councilor Munroff.
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. Missed the last city council meeting, I was away, but a couple of highlights that I've done here recently have been, Nighthawk was, had a casino, and I got to the honor of volunteering for about eight hours at the Great Northern Casino, that's always a lot of fun. Of course, was at the State of the City address, had a CRI steering team meeting, and met with, with the Downtown Association, and took in the Chamber of Commerce mixer at the Daily Herald Tribune. Also, the, on the 12th here recently, I had an opportunity to meet with ATB CEO Dave Mullet and a few of his crew, and talking about the launch of a new business initiative for, for basically, I guess, angel investing into, into businesses. It sounds quite exciting and looking forward to it. The art auction on Saturday, once again, the art gallery does a fantastic job there. I always come back a little, little lighter in the wallet as usual, but, but it was a great, great event. Different, different food policy this year, they actually had table service, I thought it was quite fantastic. And I just wanted to quickly recognize Michelle Gardner and Lucy Ramirez, who have, they were actually presenting at Rotary Club last Friday about the recycling issue that we're seeing here in Grand Prairie, and gave an update on the community garden, et cetera, and I just wanted to say that they did a fantastic job of educating the people in the room, and I hope, I hope they keep up the good work. That was it, thanks, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councilor Munroff. Councilor Altill.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On the 2nd of April, I attended the Council of Hall Strategic Priorities Session, and some of the changes that we made are priorities, was council priorities, advocacy priorities, and corporate strategies. On the 3rd, I met with City Manager Greg Schirbach, and we discussed some, our quarterly meeting, and it was a good, good chat. On the 4th, I attended a cheerleaders' meeting. Once again, your knowledge of the cheerleaders is leaders of the community being placed in a wheelchair for a day to feel the restrictions possible that that would have in a community like ourselves. I also attended later that day the River of Death and Discovery Annual, or I guess would be monthly, meeting, and nothing come out of that that can be discussed at this point in time. On the 5th, I attended a tender opening. On the 6th, I was at the Grand Prairie and District Victim Services fundraiser, and this was at Ovation's Dinner Theater, and behalf, on behalf of the mayor, I gave greetings as well as the council, and it was a great fundraiser event, and I enjoyed myself quite well. On the 8th, I attended our grad class reunion, and that will be, well, it is a starting point, and it will be taking place in the August-long weekend of next year, which will coincide with our 100th anniversary, major fun, major weekend. Classes of 1979, 80, and 81 are, are going to be invited to participate. On the 9th, I attended the library board meeting, once again, just the everyday run-of-the-mill stuff that the library has to deal with. On the 10th, I attended another cheerleaders' meeting. In the evening, I attended the Avondale North Neighborhood Meeting. We are actually starting neighborhood group on the north side, beyond the north side of 108th from 101st West. And we had a good turnout, we had it at the Avondale School, and got some good ideas coming up, and some of those will be coming to committee here fairly soon. On the 11th, I attended the morning mixer at the Can West, and on the 12th, or later on that day, I attended the building committee meeting for the Philip J. Curry Museum, talked to the architects and the builders, and the county council. On the, later that day, after lunch, we attend, I attended with many of the council members present today, the launch of the Grand Prairie book, and it's got some fabulous pictures, and I, it's a good thing. I'm very proud that that book is being published. On the 12th, I attended the Sears grand opening and got to meet the store manager and the CEO, Calvin McDonald, and got to listen to a great inspirational speech by my colleague, what's your name again? Lauren Radburn, and it was a great, great store, great staff, and great sales. Got this shirt there this weekend, just throwing that out. Well, you bragged about your washer and dryer.
Just saying.
Just saying. And also, I attended the Chamber ATB, I guess it would be a promotion of their new creative money-raising possibilities, and once again, Dave Mullet was there from. And once again, Dave Mullet was there from ATB. And on Saturday evening, I had an opportunity to attend the Calendar Girls Grand Prairie Little, Grand Prairie Live Theater Play. And I'd like to thank Greg Sherback for making this possible for us. And I got to tell you, it's probably one of the best plays I've seen in a very long time. Great acting, great singing, and a great location. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. April 2nd, I also attended Strategic Priorities Chart Discussion, and the chart will be coming to committee, I believe, this week to see the product of that discussion. Alberta, April 4th and 5th, I attended on behalf of Mayor Given the Mid-Sized Mayor's Caucus in Red Deer. Mayor Given has become a very active participant in this group, this caucus, I think to Grand Prairie's credit and benefit. And I was pleased to represent him and council at that two-day meeting. City Manager Greg also attended, because they have a City Managers Group meeting at the same time as well. And we were able to, he was able to give me a little bit of tour, and we checked out the transit terminal slash parking structure. And we were able to look at a skateboard park, we looked at an indoor tennis facility. Is that it, Bill? Is that it, Greg? Anyway, it was good, we used some time when we got there, just to toodle around a bit. April 9th, I brought greetings on behalf of mayor and council to the Parkinson's Awareness Month Proclamation. They had an education day at the Golden Age Center that was well-attended. The CEO for Parkinson's Alberta spoke, and then had a doctor from Edmonton spoke. It was about 50-some participants, so it was a very worthwhile event. April 11th, I went to the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association Board Meeting at noon, then to the Grand Prairie Book Launch. And it was presented by Seize the World Publishing Limited. I just want to recognize Madeleine Hombert, the writer publisher, and Klaus Peters, the photographer. In the evening, I went to the Grand Prairie Legal Guidance Appreciation Evening. And I brought greetings on behalf of the mayor and council to that event. It's basically, we have 23 lawyers in, which is about 45% of lawyers in Grand Prairie, don't, I guess, volunteer their time to help people in our community, citizens who need that support and don't have the flexibility financially to access a lawyer. So, just kudos to our legal community for that service, that support they provide. April 12th, thanks, Councilor O'Toole, I did bring greetings again on behalf of the mayor and council. The Sears reopening, it's spacious, bright, display areas have been improved. It's just really a superstore. And to note also, it was the 11th remake of a store across Canada. And as the CEO said to us, they chose to be strategic and look to do these kinds of things in areas that they perceive to be winners. So, means that that store is successful, and they hope it can be even more successful with this renovation. So, thank you to Sears Canada for that. I also attended the ATB Innovation Idea Crowdfunding Funding Information Session. In the evening, I popped down to the Coca-Cola Center, a 10th Anniversary Party. So, my grandson was not available, but I went down anyway to check things out. Congratulations to Kali and her team for putting on, there was free public skating, there was food, there were some giveaways, and so it was a nice way to, and it was well-attended, which was great to see. So, it was a good idea with Kali and staff. And on the 13th, I attended the Art Gallery, Grand Prairie Annual Art Auction. And this morning, I had a, or noon, I had a Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association Committee Meeting. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As well, last council, I was away in Edmonton with my family. On April 9th, I attended the Canadian Home Builders Association Lunch, talking about changes to codes. And I think this is a great way that this is happening with the city now, meeting with industry and city staff of community growth. Jeanette, Valerie, Scott, everybody there. It's really a good way to go about it, and a lot of people in the industry are very happy about it, because you can discuss things right there. Part of the changes is the new Alberta Building Code is supposed to come out in the fall of this year. The last one was 2006, they're anywhere from five to eight years, and it's up to the national government and the provinces follow suit. So, they're saying this fall it'll be out. And there's one I want this council to look at for hopefully the next council, but not to even go there. Edmonton and Calgary are kind of playing with zero-lot line. One house is right on the property line, and the other house is 1.2 meters away. So, you want to talk about congestion and safety of our roads, please stay far away from this. So, okay, April 10th, I also attended the Senator 2000 Board Meeting. Councilor Wong talked about most of what I was going to say there, but getting his report. But the one about the paving stones, Senator 2000 is going to be used a lot more. There's a new trail system getting built there this summer and under the bridge and going out towards, I guess you could say, Tony Roma's around the other side. I think it's great safety for the kids, but also, it's a good idea looking at paving stones around the sun dial. It is heaving a bit, and I think the last, when it was done, it was 2000 when it was built. So, it's time to fix her up. And I believe the city staff do some fixing downtown, and maybe they might be able to fix this one. As well, on April 11th, I have to do this. I was at the kickoff for the Coffee Table Book, Grand Prairie. And it was a beautiful book, I have to show two pictures, bear in mind here. This is, this is the book, oh, I'm not in there. And there's one picture here, the photographer, Mr. Peters, was talking about. The old gentleman from the war was watching the parade, and it was the first parade he couldn't participate in because of his health. So, stuff behind the pictures. One more, two more, and I'll be, that I did, this one I... I have to bring this one out, I do work for Warehouser as well, they help participate in this book. And hopefully, the mills and companies, the reason why I'm showing it, could buy some books for their staff for Christmas and everything. This is a beautiful, beautiful book, and I think companies can reach out and grab some. And one more picture. I have to do this one, Helen. We have our Councilor Rice is in here. She's getting her nails done, but anyways, at a spa. It's a beautiful, beautiful picture, and thank you, Helen, for doing that picture. And I hope business really hit this off. They need, I think, over 1,000 to break even, and I hope they really pick it up and go after this. This is awesome. This ain't mine yet, I don't have, I took this up from the mayor's office. So, anyways. So, then, April 12th, I was at Sears re-grand opening of renovating. As a Sears cardholder, unbelievable. Ladies, gentlemen, and ladies, I think it's one of the most finest-done department stores for yourselves in the city of Grand Prairie. You walk in there, when they took over, for I believe it was K-Mark, it was never upped up, but this one is redone, and it is absolutely beautiful. Like, you must go check Sears out. I thought that was the day of the opening, that there'd be first 400 come, get a price off. No, it was the next day, so I couldn't make it. But I guess they let people in early, because my father, mother-in-law went, and they missed out on the coupon savings. So, but Sears, it's looking good. And I would just hats off to Councilor Radburn for the greetings. He had two bigs applause, congratulate companies and areas are successful because of their staffing. And I took that one from it, and it was true, their staffing were all there, and they have 70 or 80 staffing. As well, he said he was there a week earlier and got a washer and dryer, and that was a big applause as well. But, so anyways, that was great. And then as well, as April 12th, I was at this innovation meeting at the Senator 2000 with the, as Councilor O'Toole said, with the CEO Dave there. I still don't understand it all, I think it's new what they're about to do, and it's with Community Futures, Chamber of Commerce. So, hopefully, I think it's going to be laid out in the next two, three weeks, and we'll get a better understanding. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Councilor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. On Wednesday, April 3rd, I had my quarterly meeting with the city manager. On April 4th, I attended the Chair Leaders Meeting with Councilor O'Toole. I think May 13th is going to be a really great day, that's the day of our event. We're still looking for leaders of the community to step up and volunteer to sit in a wheelchair for the day. We've got a whole day's worth of activities for them. April 9th, I attended the Canadian Home Builders Association Luncheon. April 12th, I was present for the grand reopening of the Sears Ribbon Cutting. And I do want to follow up with a story, because I did go the next day, and I talked to some of the staff there. They had a crowd forming at 5:30 in the morning for their gift card giveout. They gave away 100 gift cards. I don't know what the values are, but they were obviously fairly significant, because they had to open the doors early, they were bursting. One was $500, wow. Later that afternoon, I attended the ATB Presentation on Crowdsource Funding. I'll just explain it really quickly, a number of councillors already mentioned it. Crowdsource funding, or crowdfunding, is, it's a new way that businesses are looking at getting funding. It's run through social media. Basically, a business would have an initiative that they wanted funded, and they would put that out there. Now, the ATB Bank is helping to facilitate this. They're also in partnership with Community Futures and the Chamber of Commerce. But basically, you ask for a certain amount, and that would be your tipping point to make that project go. And then, people on the internet, hopefully your social network and your customers, will support you on that. They will, they will fund a certain amount in exchange for a reward. And that reward is, could be, you know, prepaid gift card, could be just about anything. Could be as small as a t-shirt, as big as a weekend getaway somewhere. And as soon as you get enough commitments, everyone gets charged for that. The business gets their money, and they get to, they get to fund whatever they were looking for. It's a, there was a famous story that was told. It was a, I guess, one of the most famous websites out there is Kickstarter. And it had to do with a gentleman who had designed a watch for, that would sync up with an iPod or an iPhone. And he was looking for a million dollars to put it into production. He put the request out on his social media network and said that for everyone who donates a certain amount, you're going to get one of the first watches off the production line. And he was looking for a million dollars to fund the initial production and all the development of all the parts. Ended up raising $10 million and having to fulfill a gigantic order. Now, this crowdsource funding project that ATB is putting on probably won't get that kind of reaction, but it will help us on a local level. It's a pilot project, we're hoping that there's going to be a number of businesses locally that'll be able to take advantage of it. My final bit of report is for Saturday, April 13th. I attended the Be Fit for Life Event at Muscati Park. Despite the weather, they kept the event going. They had a decent turnout, it started to warm up in the afternoon, and families were coming out and playing around at all the exhibits. There were 13 exhibitors that showed up and manned their booths, just like troopers. So, GPRC was there, there was the Cricket Club there demonstrating their cricket activity. The Frisbee Golf Club, which is starting up, was out there. There was a parkour demonstration, and that's the very athletic obstacle course thing that you'll probably, you've probably already seen on YouTube, those guys just running around doing flips off of dumpsters and things like that. Luge at Nighthawk, as well as the, there was an Aboriginal group showing off the, it was called Run and Scream. So, you basically, you hold a beanbag, and you take a big breath, and you scream as loud as you can, and you run as fast as you can. And the second you run on a breath, you have to drop your beanbag, and they measure the distance that you go. And I thought it was pretty interesting, the kids loved it, kids were just screaming their heads off, because they're always told never to run and scream. And I think this is their one opportunity to do that. I was really glad that I went out there, and like I said, everyone was amazing out there. I couldn't believe the number of people that showed up on a cold, and fairly windy day. That's the end of my report.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Councilor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I attended with other members of council, the Canadian Home Builders Technical Luncheon Presentation about the Building Code Changes in 2013. As Councilman McLean alluded to, a few of the changes coming forward are within the Plumbing Code, the Water Reuse, Fire Code Changes, the 2013 Alberta Building Code, Energy Efficient for Part IX Buildings, Administration Fines, Ticketing, Mandatory New Home Warranties, and other changes within the, coming out in the 2015 Code as well. And earlier on this week, I attended with City Manager Greg Sherback our quarterly review. So, a pat on the back to Mr. Sherback and his staff. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Councilor Gustafson. Councilor Rice?
I attended Utilities Consumer Advocate Board Meeting. Utility Consumer Advocate Board has participated in 21 interventions in the last two months. So, significant to all the consumers in Alberta. As Beautification Chairman of Senator 2000, I want to encourage our business community, there's an opportunity for you to purchase the flower planters at Senator 2000, and you will see the beautiful little plaque that goes in each of them, who they're sponsored by. Absolutely amazed at the number of people who pass through those doors every summer. So, I encourage you to call either myself or Senator 2000 to explore the opportunities for sponsorship. That is, to a lot of people, their first introduction to our city. We want to make sure it's as beautiful as possible in the summer. So, again, I encourage the business community to take advantage. It's very low-cost advertising. And Councilor McLean talked about the Seize the World Book on Grand Prairie. And while he took the mayor's book, he didn't bother to mention that the mayor and his family are also in that book. So, very nice picture, your worship. That's it.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Councilor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also, on May, or April 2nd, I attended the Strategic Priorities Review. On the 4th, I attended most of the day assessment review at the Coca-Cola Center. On the 9th, I also attended the Canadian Home Builders Association Technical Luncheon, along with other councillors, and Valerie, Kirk Norris, and Jeanette Ferguson were there. Thanks for them coming out, and thank you very much, Valerie. She sent us a copy of Ms. Maisenew's presentation. Later on, 2:00 in the afternoon, I was the one to open those tenders that we approved tonight, about $9 million. On the 10th, I attended the Senator 2000 Management Meeting. On the 12th, I also was at Sears at 7:00. I'd left ANW, because I was over there at 6:00. Some of the other stragglers came in at 7:00, 7:30. But anyway, Mayor Given, you were mentioned there, because Councilor Radburn said that you couldn't be there, because you were having a baby. And then, he did correct himself. That was pretty good, thank you. Yeah, it's a very nice store, all new styles, as you can see, one of the really nice Irish styles over there. Congratulations, the manager Mike. Again, later on that day, I opened some more tenders at 2:00. And I just want to have the citizens of Grand Prairie, just to kind of give them a little bit of a warning, there's going to be lots of things happening. That was a $4 million overlay and a $4 million sidewalk rehab. So, the city of Grand Prairie, you're going to see some of our infrastructure. We're really working at it, and you're going to see lots of things happening. Just kind of apologize in the start, there's going to be some delays. Tended to Ovation's at 6:00 at night, that was, that was very nice. On the 13th, I also attended the annual art auction at Teresa Sergeant Hall. And I could, I wrote your name very well, Councilor Munro. There's just one other thing, I want all the veterans out there with the license plate not to worry. The city of Grand Prairie are not canceling your ability to park at our parking stalls, like it has been in Calgary at the, I think it was at the airport or whatever, saw it on the news the other day. But your plates are still very valued and are going to be able to work in the city of Grand Prairie for a very, very long time, and that's it. Mayor Given?
Thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. I think just about all the events that I attended had been mentioned, except for one. I was at GPRC a couple of weeks ago to attend and give them a lecture on local government and the basics of local government. It was great to be able to do that with one of their political studies courses. As a number of council members mentioned, over the last week, they've attended events on my behalf. That's going to probably happen for the next couple of weeks a number of times, as my wife Susan and I are expecting a baby anytime now, or over the last week. It should have been here already. But thanks very much, council, for picking up the slack and attending those community events on my behalf and representing council. Certainly appreciate everybody pitching in. And with that, we'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.